Good evening. I'd like to call the February 3, 2025 Upper Gwinnett Township Works Session Meeting to order. I will be doing the pledge tonight in honor of Black History Month.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and just for all.
Thank you. Deanna, would you please complete a roll call?
Kathryn Carter, President. Rebecca Moody, Vice President. Here. Case Hall, Commissioner.
Here.
Ms. McNaney, Commissioner.
Here.
Gregory Mall, Commissioner.
Here.
Andrew Zaddell, Township Manager.
Here.
Megan Weaver, Assistant Township Manager. Lauren Gallagher, Township Solicitor.
Here.
Nicholas Cross, Township Engineer.
Here.
David Duffy, Chief of Police. Ryan Shapiro, Finance Director. David Conroy, Zoning Officer. Thank you.
Lauren, were there any executive sessions?
Yes, the board met executive session earlier, leaving these matters of collective bargaining.
Thank you.
Sure. So Items Three, Items Four and Five will be dealt with next week. We'll be having years of service celebrations for Montana Light Heart and Jonathan Gil. And then, did you already mention that there's no public comment? Okay.
Number seven, no one has signed up for public comments. Public comment? I have a public comment.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to read the statement, message from the Upper Gwinnett Township Board of Commissioners that was sent out last week, but for those who may not have social media, "As your elected officials, we, the Upper Gwinnett Township Commissioners, stand united in our commitment to fostering a community where every individual feels safe, valued and respected. Our township's mission is to provide innovative, safe, transparent and physically responsible services while responding to the needs of all residents, businesses and visitors in a timely and respectful manner. We want to make it clear that Upper Gwinnett Township is a welcoming and inclusive community where all people, regardless of religion, race, ethnicity, class, sexual orientation, ability or any other characteristics, are embraced and treated with dignity. We are committed to creating a place where diversity is celebrated and where hate, discrimination and intolerance have no place. Our strength lies in our unity and together we will continue to build a township that reflects the values of respect, equality and understanding. We are here to listen, support and ensure that Upper Gwinnett remains a place, a safe space where everyone feels at home." Thank you.
Dave, would you like to complete your planning and zoning report?
Evening, everyone. So, little update on some planning and zoning matters. 1327 East Prospect Ave., believe it or not, I actually have a little bit of an update. They called last week saying they're ready to resubmit their plans in the next few weeks, finally. So, we'll be doing that. Some zoning hearing board applications for this month. 240 Gwinnett Ave. is just going to ask for an extension this month. They received zoning relief, I believe, last May for an addition on their house for, I think, a side yard setback, I believe, and a non-conformity variance. They received both those variances. They're asking for a one-year extension from the DHP this coming month. And also, we have 570 The Cowal Pike on the agenda this month for zoning. They're just asking for a variant, that's the roads landscaping place on The Cowal. They're just asking to increase their LED signage from 23.3 square feet to 28.72 square feet, 24 square feet of maximum allowable signage. And then, one zoning hearing board application that we just received within the last day or two that's not on your packet is for 351 Summietown, Merck, across the street here. They're basically putting in an emergency generator, the rear of their property. They need a rear yard setback relief as well as a height requirement. I think they're going, I want to say about 37 feet high where 35 feet is allowed. So, they're asking for those two variances at the end of this month. But that's it for the zoning hearing board applications for this month. As far as 1500 Pembroke Parkway, the Walters Group, they'll be in front of the Planning Commission next week after they submitted their revised plans. And we got comments back, so they're ready to present in front of the Planning Commission for both their conditional use as well as their land development application. And then, what also came in this past month was a waiver of land development application for Merck at the West Point Campus. They're just proposing to, basically, what's the word I'm looking for? For minor wetland areas, they're looking to mitigate, I'm proud to store it, thank you, on their property. It's disturbing, about two point acres total, so they will need, I believe, a PDS for it. So, we're in the middle of reviewing that application right now. That's last Friday.
No problem, I just.
After we had to get our agenda item.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Anything else? Good.
Thanks, Andrew. I just wanted to give a brief update on the Haynes Run Stream Bank Restoration Project. Construction's been ongoing for a few weeks now, and it's anticipated to continue into the spring. Once the stream banks have been rehabilitated, the contractor's going to come in in the spring and plant native species and vegetation to make sure to increase the stability of the stream banks. And then, once the project has been, there are some plantings, some native species that are going to be coming in that are like fall species. So, there's going to be a hold on the project from spring until the fall where they can get back in there and plant those. You know, from spring to the fall, there's not going to be any activity out there, but the majority of the projects can be closed out at that point. So, at this point, you know, the project's moving along really well. They're starting the grading this week, and, you know, we anticipate that project being wrapped up in the spring. Thanks.
Thanks, Nick. Any questions? In the packet, you'll see the staff department reports. They will be on the consent agenda as well as the board meeting minutes from January 13. I'll turn it back over to President Carter for the proclamation for Black History Month.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the proclamation for Black History Month. Can I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Ocean Passage unanimous. Let's take this time to read nice work and thank Deanna again for her work on the proclamation for Black History Month. Whereas in 1926, historian Cardy Woodson established a week in February to celebrate Black History Month, Black History, which in 1976 was expanded and changed to Black History Month and was officially recognized by President Gerald Ford and every president thereafter. Whereas each February, we pause to reflect on the contributions of the African-American community to our national and local identity. And Black History Month gives us an opportunity to learn more about this important part of our nation's history. And whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual and political development. And whereas the 2025 theme for Black History Month, African-Americans in Labor, is a powerful reflection on the pivotal role that the hard work of African-Americans have played in shaping our country's history. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls on our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas Upper Gwinnett Township continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the county, the state, our country and the world. And now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners do hereby designate the month of February to be set aside as Black History Month in Upper Gwinnett Township, proclaim this third day of February 2025. Thank you.
Thanks, President Carter. The next item on the agenda, item 13, is approval of what I promised to be our very last payment for the building renovation project. This payment is specifically for the HVAC portion of the project, which we had to have, that was like the last thing to get finished up, and that's why we have a bill that is hovering over us still in 2025. Any questions on that? Okay. In Commissioner Moody's section, we have, item 14, we are actually going to be asking the board to table until March as there are a couple changes happening on the EPA side. That will be off the agenda for next week, and you'll see it back in March. We're also going to be looking for authorization to advertise brake retarders on South Valley Forge Road between White's Road and Summietown Pike. This is something that residents have been asking for for quite some time. Initially, I'd had a resident contact me about it. Megan's had several complaints. And Megan, would you like to talk about this, since you did such a great job with it? Public compliment.
So, it's just updating our ordinance. We do have a couple other roads that are located, not located, that are also prohibited where you can't have brake retarders. So, this would be updating the ordinance to add this. We did previously ask PennDOT to do a study because we do need PennDOT's permission to be able to put up these signs and adopt this ordinance. So, they did do the study, and it meets all of the criteria, so they approved it. Tal Menston does own half of the roadway, so Tal Menston will be doing the same in adopting this ordinance to prohibit brake retarders in this stretch of road here.
Any questions?
So, obviously, if we're looking to do this, and PennDOT has approved this, we agree that they are not necessary here, the brake retarders?
Yeah.
Okay. So, it's not something that the trucks need in order, it's not in the area where this is a steep decline?
No, they do evaluate the grading vehicle, like accident reports for a certain time period. So, they do have criteria where they determine if it's safe or not to prohibit them.
And most of the time, we just follow PennDOT criteria because we're required to anyway, in a lot of different ways. So, we sort of look to them for the approval criteria. Any other questions on that item? Okay. Thank you, Megan. Next week, we will also take dedication of the sanitary sewer facilities for the Wheatley Walk neighborhood as well as give conditional approval on that final escrow release. The only thing holding those two items up, I think, in the case of item 16, is we need the solicitor's final approval, which Lauren was not concerned about us putting this on the agenda. And it's also, we would not release that final release until Lauren is comfortable on the other item. And the last one is a Merck waiver request. Any questions on those? Commissioner Hall sadly has nothing in her category, but last month she had quite a lot. So, I'd never know who to throw these to when we have a decision in another commissioner's area. Should I throw it to you, President Carter? Okay. So, it's a decision item number 19.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 03-2025 Comprehensive Recreation Park and Open Space Plan. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Give a motion in a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
And thank you. That was just really a housekeeping item. Last meeting, we had the full proposal. You don't have to read it. Nope. It's just a resolution accepting the open space plan that has been widely discussed. We will also be looking for approval next week for the installation of a third basketball court at Parkside Place as per our new comprehensive park and open space plan. Anyone that visits the township in the summer knows how busy our basketball courts are. I think we could build probably 10 and still fill them based on how busy they always seem to be. So, this is something that was in the park and rec budget for this year. And as you see in other departments, namely wastewater, everyone's sending you their big projects and their capital plan to get started with ordering. So, that will be up for your consideration next week as well. Are there any top questions on that one? Okay. In the wastewater category, they are looking for approval to purchase 100 manhole castings and 25 cured-in-place pipeliners. Both of those items, 21 and 22, are INI remediation measures that you guys should be very familiar with from the budget. Item 23, our staff are looking for approval to begin a sledge study with Barton and La Judas Environmental Engineers in the amount of $25,000. This is to hire a specific engineer just to study our sledge, the way we handle sledge at the plant, which has been a priority of our wastewater team for quite some time. They're also looking to purchase manhole risers and to approve aeration tank planning SCADA quote with BSI for upgrades to our SCADA system. Lastly, they're looking to purchase some equipment for our PAC chem feed system. And that is, all of those items are budgeted. I don't believe any of them are over budget. It's all exactly what we would expect from wastewater at the beginning of the year. And then, we will just have the open and paid invoices, and that's a wrap. Thank you. Sure.
And with that, go Eagles. This meeting's adjourned.